Listen to the building for a long time, but we do have restroom facilities right out this door behind you to my left. If you head out that way and you didn't know, you can use those as well. Please feel free to get up, move around if you want to, get another drink or stretch your legs, use the restroom. Don't feel like you're chained to your seat and you've got to stay here, right in one little chair. You know, you can move around. We're okay with that. This is our faithful friend Carl Cicero. He is Chair of our Staff Pastor Parish Relations Committee here, hence his announcement about our custodian Jonathan Panzol. My name is Cindy Muter. I am the lay leader here at this church, and we are both members of the Church Council. Carl had a good idea yesterday. We could have the Church Council stand up and let you see their faces, but I don't know. Do you want to do that? Can you wave anyway? If you're on the Church Council, wave your hand. And Cynthia, did Cynthia wave her hand? She's chatting. I don't know. All right, so the Church Council is why we're having a meeting today, because the Church Council and pastors said we'd like to get together. So that's what we're going to do. The purpose today is to share some information, some basic information, and make sure that everyone has that basic information. There will be a chance to ask questions at the end, and we hope that this meeting is going to last no longer than one hour. And if we don't get through all the questions that folks have today, we'll have another meeting in a different time. So you can count on that one hour time today. I'm looking at my list to make sure I covered everything. Oh, yes, we need to get our cards for questions. Joyce, did you bring those or they still in the office?
Yes, they're right here.
Okay.
I'll pass them out.
So we're going to do questions today in a written format. And the reason for that is we want to make sure we capture all the questions. We want to make sure that if we don't get to all the questions here, that we'll have it for later. And we also want to make sure that if you don't feel comfortable speaking your question aloud, that you can still ask a question. So there's cards, and we also have writing utensils. So we're going to make sure that you get everything you need for that. And if you have more than one question, you can get another card or whatever. Just raise up your hand and we'll figure out what your need is for that. I just thought of a really cheeky question. Does anybody have a question about the questioning process? No. Jim will write it down for me, her question about asking the questions. No, we're not going to do that. I know there's still some cards coming through the back. Did anybody not get a writing utensil that wanted that?
They're coming.
Bruce needs pencils still. If you don't have a question, that's okay too, or if you think of it later, won't you reach out to Carl or me? We'd be happy to have you do that. All right, so let's all center ourselves. We're going to start out this time together by bringing God into the mix. So if you would please join your hearts with mine in prayer. God, we are here today as your people. We are all in all for you. We ask that you would fill this room with your Holy Spirit, that you would continue to lead and guide us as you have done, you are doing, and you will do in the future. We thank you for this church, for our pastoral leader and his family. We thank you for the saving grace of Jesus Christ. And we pray today in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, so Carl is going to take it away for our meeting.
Once again, thank you all for coming this morning. It's great to see so many people here. Just to echo what Cindy said quickly, this is a collaborative effort on the part of the Church Council. We've been working on this throughout the summer, and we are going to share with you now. The United Methodist Church has 12.5 million members worldwide, and there are 7 million members in the United States. The church was founded, the United Methodist Church was founded, on three basic principles. Do no harm, avoiding evil of all kinds. Do good of every possible sort, and as far as possible to all. Practice the ordinances of God, engaging in individual and communal spiritual practices. The ordinance of God, individual and communal spiritual practices are prayer, Bible reading, worship, and the Lord's suffer.
The organizational structure of the United Methodist Church, the global church of the worldwide Methodist Church denomination, structure mirrors that of the United States government. There's a judicial branch, an executive branch, and a legislative branch. Sorry, I am speaking ahead of what I have up there. That's what I just told you. The General Conference of the United Methodist Church meets every four years to set church policy. And the Book of Discipline by John Wesley, which has been updated quite a bit, details church law. And it is in line with the Bible, our authoritative source.
Now, let's take a moment to look at the history of the Book of Discipline. In 1972, the General Conference of the United Methodist Church altered and amended the Book of Discipline. "We do not condone the practice of homosexuality and consider this practice incompatible with Christian teaching." The Book of Discipline prohibits ordination of practicing self-avowed homosexuals. It also forbids clergy from blessing same-gender union. The Book of Discipline forbids the use of United Methodist Church facilities for same-gender union ceremonies. And it prohibits the use of church funds for gay offices or other groups that promote the acceptance of homosexuality. The Book of Discipline states that homosexual persons, no less than heterosexuals, are individuals of sacred worth. Both groups are included in the ministry of the church and can receive the gift of God's grace. The Book of Discipline defines marriage as a union between one man and one woman.
So what is the current situation? The United Methodist Church and its members are at an impasse, which has caused injury to its members, which relates to do no harm. This is interfered with the mission to make disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. And the main divide that we now have is the marriage and ordination of homosexual individuals. And some believe separation is one way to resolve the differences, allowing each part of the church to remain true to its theological understanding while recognizing the dignity, equality, integrity, and respect of every person.
In February of 2019, General Conference added paragraph 2553 to the Book of Discipline. Paragraph 2553 is a narrow pathway for churches to disaffiliate or leave the United Methodist Church over the issue of human sexuality. Paragraph 2553 allows churches to retain their building by going through this process. The Book of Discipline, "All buildings and property of a local church belong to the United Methodist Church and are held in trust by local congregations for the benefit of the entire denomination," referred to as the Trust Clause. This is paragraph 2501. Now, in paragraph 2553, normally a church that leaves the United Methodist Church or closes does not keep their building. However, paragraph 2553 allows churches to retain their building in this particular pathway of leaving the denomination. Since 1972, discussions and disagreements among the United Methodist Church and the delegates to General Conference over human sexuality.
What's next? We have choices. Choice A would be to do nothing, remain United Methodist as we are right now. Choice B, to begin a process to explore leaving the United Methodist Church. And UMC is abbreviation for United Methodist Church, if you weren't familiar with that term. Choice B has a church voting in a church conference. And if two-thirds majority vote yes, disaffiliation can proceed following the timeline that has been set up through paragraph 2553 and from our upper New York Annual Conference trustees. And the end result would be that this church and its members will no longer be United Methodist. And the church could, if they chose choice B, join an existing denomination. And one example of that would be the Global Methodist Church. Another option would be to become an independent church, which means you wouldn't have a denomination affiliation such as United Methodist. So here's parts of that choice B timeline that we'd like you to be aware of. The church fills out an application to explore disaffiliation, and that would be due to the superintendent and annual conference by March 1, 2023. There would be a, oh, I have an extra word in here. We didn't notice that. So omit that first conference. Start for church conference vote approved by a two-thirds majority no later than April 1, 2023. All obligations and criteria, which there are others, would need to be satisfied by May 1, 2023. An annual conference would vote at the annual conference meeting June 2023 to approve or not approve a church's disaffiliation.
Okay, now we're going to move on to the question portion of our gathering here this morning. We would ask you to please write down your questions, and we will answer as many as we can. It's just about 11:30 now, so we have about 45 minutes or so. If you would like to take a couple of moments to gather your thoughts, to generate some questions, get some more refreshments, feel free to do so, and we will continue shortly, very shortly.
Oh, and by the way, you know what? We wanted to say to you all, thank you for taking time to stay. We know that you're busy and you have other things going on, but we see that you value finding out the information and knowing what's going on. So we thank you for that. We asked as your Church's Council if you would, and you did, so we appreciate it.
I have a question.
Is it about the, this?
Yes, yeah.
Did you get a chance to write it down?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
I just remember we met, what, about two years ago on the same topic in the National Conference Society table. So now we've got it back again two years later, which is exactly the same thing we did two years ago. So there will be another vote in June, from what I can understand.
Elaine, that is not correct. There was a vote to not change the Book of, to change the Book of Discipline that failed in 2019. So we are not back to where we were. The vote was no. Does that help? Okay. Who has your questions written down?
I have one. Could you summarize the whole concept of what we just knew?
Oh, my. We thought we were making it as simple as possible. Okay, but thank you. Because, and thank you for being brave in saying that, because maybe if you thought that, there were a lot of other people who thought that too and didn't say so.
And I wasn't aware, like, this is what our meeting was basically going to be on.
Oh, okay. So we wanted you to know what is the state of the church right now and what has happened. So like we mentioned, since 1972, when the Book of Discipline changed, there's been discussions about the change of the Book of Discipline and the issue of human sexuality within the church. Now, we're to a point where General Conference acted in 2019 and made a, what they call a pathway for churches to decide not to be United Methodist anymore if they want to do that for reasons of conscience over the issue of human sexuality. So, yes, either, either side, regardless if, if you weren't in favor of the current Book of Discipline and you felt for reasons of your own conscience you needed to leave the Methodist Church, or if you're concerned about the turmoil since 1972 and you think that it's not a good situation for you anymore. Carl's going to start sorting through these questions. Pastor will help us if we get stuck, but he's going to let us kind of lead this. This is his request. We're not shutting him out.
I just want to say, you know, being on the Church Council, we've talked about this a lot, and it is very confusing. And so if you're sitting here and hearing this for the first or second time, you probably are confused. I think it takes a lot of discussion and really understanding what has gone on, why it's gone on, what the options are. It is a big decision, and it's very confusing.
Yeah, so Linda says, as being part of the Church Council, we've had discussion and discussion, and until you have gotten more deeply into it, it may be confusing. And that's okay. We can keep asking questions and keep providing clarity. And there could be a decision. The decision could be, we're okay. We're not going to make any change at this time. The decision could be, now that I know that there is a pathway to disaffiliation, I think that I feel our church would be better off not being United Methodist. So does that make sense? Does that help with some clarity there? I don't know. But anyhow, Carl, do you have some good questions?
I do, indeed.
All right, would you start, because I think they're tired of hearing me.
Yes. I'm going to start with.
I'm going to start with this question, which Cindy alluded to a moment or two ago. This question says, "I would like to know how Pastor Dave feels about our current options." And we have had this discussion with Pastor Dave and with Jan. The feeling is that they would remain neutral, is that correct, in this discussion? Pastor Dave is our pastor, and Pastor Dave and Jan make a wonderful team, leading us here in a variety of ways. This is a discussion, and this is a, you know, that, a situation that could come to a vote as we move through the process here. And Dave will be here to guide us and to help answer questions and such, but is not going to state an opinion one way or the other. That is something that will be discussed among the members of the church. Is that accurate? Okay, close enough.
It's a church's decision.
It is the, it is the church's decision, okay? So I wanted to get that answered first so that everybody is aware of that. I think that's important, so.
I picked one right off the top for Pastor Dave, which I'll give him a minute. If we vote to separate, are we still going to have a Methodist minister available? Oh, okay, so you, the person I think meant, are we going to still have a Methodist minister available at this church if we vote to separate? So I was going to say no, but you have a different idea.
It depends upon where the church is going. Like, if the Global Methodist Church, if this church were to affiliate with that, then they have an appointment system. The Lutheran Church has an appointment system. The Westlake Church has a call system.
All right, so the denomination that a church who disaffiliates, who leaves, would go to would have pastors for you if they have what we have, which is an appointment system. They would give you a pastor. If you remain United Methodist, then you will continue to have a United Methodist pastor available, appointed to you, if that's what the question was. Okay?
One thing to add, one of the options is to become independent. If you become independent, then you need to go through and develop your own, say, Book of Discipline, your doctrines, all of your policies, and then you need to do a search for a pastor. Stand in front of the speaker. That is the challenge of an independent church. It always is on a call system to provide itself the pastoral support that it needs. If you're linked with a denomination, you're linked with all that the denomination gives. So let me tie that to this one. How does the UMC support us? What might we miss? The United Methodist Church is established as a connectional church, which means that we are connected in ministry throughout the world. It also means that you have, by establishing that, you go up underneath the Book of Discipline, so everyone is intended to believe the same, provide the same doctrine, and will provide a appointment system, a pastor and such, where that's available. So what would you miss if you were to leave? It depends on where you go and what they, you associate with and what they have to offer. I hope that answers that. But in a, in a connectional system, you, you have the same options in the UMC after 2024 as you would right now in the connection.
So was this kind of part of that, what happens to pastor if they vote to accept? Did you talk about that?
No, I didn't.
All right, I'll get to that in a minute. Thank you, Pastor Dave. We appreciate this. Carl's going to go.
Okay, I have a question here. What losses would we have if we were no longer a United Methodist church? And what would we gain? First of all, let me address the losses. We would maintain the building, the property of the church that sits in. We would have to, if we chose to disaffiliate or leave, we would have to remove anything with the United Methodist symbol, the cross and plane. We would no longer have the hymnals that we are using. Anything in the building that had anything to do with the United Methodist Church would have to be removed from the building. We would no longer be United Methodist. However, once again, we would retain the physical property of the building through this narrow pathway that we've been talking about. What would we gain if we were to, to leave?
I guess folks who were, were not comfortable with what has been happening currently in the United Methodist Church would be able to remove themselves from that situation. Perhaps that would be positive for them. I know that some folks who are choosing now to disaffiliate, I know a couple folks who are, and they, they feel that the new denomination that they're affiliated with represents their belief system, represents how they interpret the Bible. So, so they feel that this is a positive change. They feel that they're leaving behind negative discussions that have happened, that they're able to be more true to their biblical interpretations, I think. So that makes them feel more comfortable. So I guess that might be a gain, if that's how someone was feeling. All right. We have, these, I think, are all related. Okay. So it, this question says, would this be a ballot vote if the church chose choice B? You remember that, that you wanted to explore disaffiliation? Well, well, let me back up a little bit. To get to choice B, the council has discussed, how will we know? What will we do? We may choose to take a straw poll and see if people want to explore this more. And if the majority say, yes, we want to explore this more, choice B, then we could go down that road. Once all those 1, 2, 3, 4 that I showed you have been satisfied, then eventually, yes, there would be a ballot vote of all members at a church conference. And what would happen to the pastor if they vote to accept? Two-thirds say, yes, that they would like to go with choice B and disaffiliate? Then all those things to either become an independent church or become part of a new denomination, we would have to go through many, many steps and... And we would, if we're not becoming United Methodist or if we're not staying United Methodist, then the new denomination we affiliate with would have to let us know what's the process for having a pastor. Or if we're an independent church, an independent church would have to hire a pastor. So does that help with what happens to pastor if they vote to accept this affiliation? Was that clear? Or I was not clear? Scott says he's okay. All right. I always go with Scott. He usually knows what he's talking about. But if you weren't clear, please ask afterward if you don't want to say right now. We want everyone to understand, and like Linda indicated, it's a little much to get your head around. Okay. Here's the question. And then I'm going to go to Carl. If they vote to accept homosexuals, and I'm not sure what this means, if this means our church or if it means, at some point, the United Methodist denomination, and the church becomes not Methodist, so not United Methodist, what happens to those who voted no in the congregation? So if the one-third voted no, you would still be a member of this church, whichever direction they decided to go. And I think you would either need to decide to stay or you would decide to move your membership to a different church. Anybody can do that at any time. If I decided tomorrow I wanted to be Baptist, I could let Dave know that and go down to the Baptist and say, hey, what do I need to do to join this church? You know, that's your free will to be part of whatever congregation that you would choose. And we're glad you've chosen this one. But you know, people from time to time do make a different choice.
What is meant by obligations and criteria that we must fulfill? Well, that is a broad question. There are several obligations that we would have to fulfill, including substantial financial obligations to the United Methodist Church if we were to disaffiliate or leave. We would, we would have to pay, we're not going to get into a lot of this right now. We can get into this at another time. But we would have to fulfill any outstanding financial obligations that we have to the district, to the conference. We would also have to make sure that we're covering the pension fund for a period of two years, I believe it is, the year and then the following year as well, to ensure that the pensions are there for retired UMC pastors.
So it's the shared ministry that we pay for the current year and the coming year and the unfunded pension costs for our retired clergy. That's what we have to pay. That's the financial part. And that goes with this question. And I'll let you finish, Carl. The total financial obligation, as we have it most currently from August, and I can break that down if you'd like it, Does anyone want to hear that broken down? How that's divided? Okay. If you want to know, would you see me after or see Dave?
Is that a one-year?
That's a one-time thing. Everything, everything we just said.
What happens if the church votes to disaffiliate and their request is not granted? Once again, this is why we're having this meeting today, because there are timelines, which we mentioned earlier, to, you know, go through the process, to let them know that we're considering it. We've had a vote. We're going to disaffiliate. Now, I was looking last night as far as an annual conference leaving. And an annual conference can vote to leave?
Annual conference can vote. But this is, I think the question is asking about if the church goes through and votes itself to leave and it has to vote the annual conference for their vote, what if they run into a issue?
It would be presented an annual conference of 2023 for 2024, which is.
June 2023.
June 2023, which is why we have those deadlines preceding that month. Any church that would be, you know, would have gone through the process of disaffiliation, that would then be on the agenda for that June 2023 annual conference for those churches that are choosing to disaffiliate or leave the United Methodist Church at that time.
It just sounded from the slide presentation that it's not a guarantee. You can say that you want to disassociate, but then conference can say, no, you cannot.
I guess in theory, that's true. I guess in theory, that's true.
Repeat that, please.
Okay. So Linda said, if you go through all the whole process to leave the denominations, denominations, excuse me, at the end, the annual conference could still say no. I guess that's true. The body of the annual conference has authority over us and the business on the floor. And they could vote no that a church may not disaffiliate, even though you followed all the steps. I don't think that's very likely. The conference trustees have put in this policy in place, so people who want to do that can do so. So why would they make you go through everything and then say no? But I guess in theory, it could happen.
That, of course, being that we would have to make sure that we had fulfilled that financial obligation. We had fulfilled all the legalities that would be required to leave the United Methodist Church. You know, insurance for the building and all kinds of other legal entities that we would have to show the annual conference that we had in fact completed all of those steps in that process.
Okay. Carl and I talked about this yesterday. So, okay. There's a terminology question. Is the global church the same as the Wesleyan covenant group? Okay. No. But the global United Methodist.
Global Methodist.
Sorry, Global Methodist. I got an extra word in. The Global Methodist Church is a newly formed denomination that was, came out of.
Supported by.
Oh, it was supported by the Wesleyan Covenant Association.
Right.
So, Global Methodist Church came from those who supported the Wesleyan Covenant Association. I don't know if that makes a difference to you, but that's the answer to this question.
Can I ask a question?
Would you be willing to write it down? No. Okay. Let Dave get this one first.
All right. A question here, a loaded question. Has the Bible been updated on this issue? We realize the book of discipline is evolving. As far as I know, the Bible has had many translations, but Scripture is Scripture. And it has, has not and will not be updated. It is, I don't know how to pl- they put this, but the Bible is the Bible. You don't, you don't change the Bible. You may change the wording of the Bible. And a true translation is based on the original Greek or Hebrew or Aramaic. So we need to step back a second and understand how the Bible was first created. The book of discipline is the doctrine for the United Methodist Church. It is, in a sense, as we've said here, the law of the church, which currently says, as they have stated well earlier, that as of 2019, we do not support the ordination. We support loving and caring for homosexual community, but not in the ordination said. So that's the debate on that one. I hope I answered that one more well.
If we remain United Methodist, how do we love those of homosexual persuasion and not condone homosexuality? This goes back to, I think, welcoming all into our church, being a loving, caring community within the church, accepting all of God's children into the church, and not condoning homosexuality. If we were to welcome homosexuals into this church, i.e. by remaining a United Methodist congregation and not going through the disaffiliation process, were there to be a homosexual marriage or union within the church? That does not mean that we would have to participate in that if you chose not to participate in that. You could take it wherever your comfort level leads you to be open and welcoming.
And this is assuming that that is possible, which now is not possible. Is that clear? It is not possible to have a same-gender marriage within the congregation here. Okay. Yeah.
Part of the, kind of the focus that we're touching on here is we do not know what will come out of 2024. And fact is, we've been postponed a couple different times to this point in general conference. So there was, at one point, and I'm sure you talked about it in this church protocol, which was a means by which churches could separate. That's basically been null and void through many transitions, including the death of the person that was spearheading the legislation begin with. So in our conversations here that we are having, we do not know what the verbiage will be in 2024, whether that will go through and allow homosexual marriages, ordinances, and all of that, or some semblance of that. There's no way of knowing. As a friend once said, who was a delegate there, he said, what goes in isn't necessarily what comes out, as in with most meetings. So I would guess that next year, in 2023, we'll start hearing some of what will be coming towards the 2024 General Conference. We don't know what that is, though, or what direction it could take. And we could debate this another 50 years and nothing could change. We don't know that either. And that's the squirrely part of this conversation because paragraph 2553 was created in 2019 with no understanding that the pandemic was on its way. And there was a general conference scheduled. And that was going to be part of the whole conversation, which then dissipated because of the pandemic and no, and a postponement and no general conference.
So let me be clear. Everyone is welcome here now. You are all welcome to be part of this church and congregation. Your friends, who may be LGBTQ, are also welcome to be part of this congregation now. All are welcome. So here's a question. Besides allowing the potential inclusion of non-hereditary marriages, what are the other big changes that becoming non-affiliated or changing denominations that could follow? I guess I would have to know what the polity of those denominations are. We'd have to speak to a specific instance to know the full answer to that question. Also, ordination of individuals, allowing them to become ministers who are LGBTQ plus. And I know you're dying to know, what was Barry going to say? What was his question? His question was, does the Global Methodist Church accept LGBTQ persons? I don't know their polity.
In congregations.
In congregations. Okay.
They are basically the same.
Okay. Okay. So Pastor Dave says that the polity of the Global Methodist Church accepts LGBTQ people to be a member of the congregation, but not in leadership roles, not to perform marriages, not to become clergy persons.
Well, that's the same as what it is now.
It is. You are right. We're winding up here. So if you had a question that you didn't get to ask, because we're almost out of questions. Yes. You can ask later. So don't feel like this is it for you. Oh, I didn't say my question. No, I don't get to ask it. You can ask. And you can ask an individual later also, if you want to.
Okay. This question has a very short response. To vote, do you have to be a member of this church? Yes. Only members of this congregation, if it should come to a vote, would be able to vote. All of the members of the congregation on the books, if you will, would be notified of the fact that a vote would be taking place and would have the opportunity to cast a vote. It would be a ballot vote that would be taken if it were to come to that point as we go through this process. Why is homosexuality such a big issue with the United Methodist Church? Why not other issues like abortion or capital punishment? Again, this is an issue that has been going around for 50 years, since 1972. And it is coming to a head now.
I'm just going to say one thing on the side. If you go back in through the conversations that we have had, there has been conversation on these other social issues that you're speaking to. And they can be found out up online without any question. And actually, in front of the book of discipline, with many of them. So this hasn't been, in a sense, a single-out issue. This has been a developing issue. The others have been worked through. And you'll note oftentimes, if you follow UMC News or something along those lines, as something comes up, there will be a group that works on that. Right now, we have Imagine No Racism. And that's been going on for a number of years to try and resolve the racism theory. We are opposite sides of the fence, staring at each other on this issue. We have not been able to bring that to a resolution like we have some of the others. And that's why this one sits as it is. Both sides will say, we look at that difference in a scriptural understanding. So I hope that helps with answering some of that.
So I've asked Pastor to pray us out. And our purpose today was to give you some basic information. And I know it gives us a lot to think about. And I encourage you to pray about it, too. If things are heavy on your heart, you know, lift that to the Lord. Get with a good friend and take some time in prayer also. Get more information, if you'd like to have it. We love you all. And we would really like to help you continue on the pathway of growing your spirit and answering questions that you have. So let's keep going forward, even if it's a little hard sometimes. We all have hard stuff in our lives. And maybe you think, ah, one more thing. But we're in this together, guys. We're in this together with you. So thank you, thank you, thank you for taking time to walk this road just a few minutes with us today.
And before I pray us out, can you give a thank you to Cindy and Carl? They put a lot in in the background to simplify this as much as possible. And honestly, I have 12-plus years in the ministry right now. And this has been something that has had my attention for that entire timeframe because of various conversations. And yes, it is heated up. And that's why we're here, to try and simplify it, to help us understand how as a church we feel. Because that is part of who we are. That becomes part of our ministry and our leading out of that. So let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you, praise you for this beautiful. Dear Lord, we thank you, praise you for this beautiful day and this time together in fellowship and, and information. We thank you for an opportunity to ask our questions and to always explore. A lot of this may be the first time heard or first time in a while, and it's a lot to take on. So we ask that you truly help us discern the direction that you are calling us as a church and individually, and bless us in this journey. For we come together, and we come alongside our community. And we certainly, Lord, want to do that in a respectful, loving way. So Lord, in this time and in this place, fill our hearts with your Holy Spirit and guide us in the direction that you have called us to, for your honor and for your glory, Lord. Watch over us as we depart, and we may do so with your Spirit overflowing as we strive to make disciples for Jesus Christ. Amen.